Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Trust. Call notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the material, the matters listed below. Please turn your phones on, vibrate or off so you can hear the instructions during the meeting. And join me for the question regents.
[inaudible]
Today's Monday, October 21st, 2019, 7:01 PM. Councilwoman Adal Creighton, Mr. Mayor Delmore.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jennifer Stoudt.
Here.
Trudy Seifert.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Krizak.
Okay, first, our business is approval of the minutes from the September 11th review.
I have some comments. Those minutes do not reflect quite a few of the important things that were discussed, primarily the change in building heights. It's mentioned in the minutes, but there's no detail as to what the discussion was. There's no mention of the fact that the issue of density in those reduced heights was discussed, even though it was only briefly. And there are a couple of other issues that were discussed during the meeting, not reflected in the minutes. And I think we ought to, excuse me, defer the approval of the minutes until they're rewritten and with a little more detail. We're getting into a pretty sensitive area, and I think more detail should be included in those minutes.
Can you write down what those, your specific comments are? If you can give to the Board Secretary, they can follow up on that.
Absolutely.
Do you have to go through to defer this? Just tell them about the minutes and you can carry it to the next meeting. You can defer to the next meeting. We can do a verbal voice motion.
Motion to carry until October 28th?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our first application is Regional Development Group LLC, 213, 215 First Avenue, Block 3901, Lot 11. There are PRA's own major site plan to construct a four-story, 24-unit residence in Connean with 41 market stands, which we're hoping to carry for the September 11th review.
So may, now the Secretary, you have the certification of Mayor Moore?
I do, and I've given a copy to Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, well, there's this written certification by the mayor that he's reviewed the video or transcripts of the last meeting and he's in the city of the, 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 remember? So we'll put that in to the record as a evening, please.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and thank you, Mayor, for listening to the tapes so we can be here tonight. You'll recall, we were last here September 23rd, and the evening was late, and we adjourned. And since that time, the applicant's professionals met with the board's professionals and addressing a lot of the technical information. So I, and I think, hopefully, you will find that that was a very productive meeting. So, Mr. Serpigo, revised plans have been submitted. Did you want me to mark them into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay.
A2, Michelle.
So A2, and I'm taking this from the insight, revised insight review memorandum. A2 would be the site plans prepared by Landmark Surveying and Engineering totaling 11 sheets, and that was last revised October 11th, 2019.
So Mr. Brooks, first.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm testimony during this review to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth?
I do.
State your name to the record.
Fuller H. Brooks.
Thank you.
Michelle Alonzo, swear on non-adjuvant.
Do you swear affirm testimony during this review to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth?
I do.
State your name to the record and affiliate you with the city. Tom, and the board planner?
Jason Fitzgerald, for India.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Serpigo, I also believe that, I guess it's A3, we could mark the stormwater management report, last revised October 11th, 2019, prepared by Landmark. And A4 could be the, with your permission, can be the signed and sealed plan prepared by Malillo and Bauer Architects, and it's last revised October 11th, 2019, consisting of six sheets.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, with that, Mr. Brooks, I think you were still under oath, or under oath again. I think you wanted to give a little introduction.
Just in case there's new people in the audience, three or four slides, just to orient everybody again, and then we'll get right to our professionals. So thank you for getting us on the schedule right away. I appreciate that. Thank you. And so if, turn to the, to the slides again. This is the location of the building. It's in the waterfront redevelopment zone. We've gone through an extensive process of becoming a subsequent master developer to I-STAR in the waterfront redevelopment zone, and this is, I believe, one of the first projects, if not the first, to come through that program as a single site. And this is the location. It's 215 First Avenue. It's currently a, well, actually, just go to the next slide, and we'll see. This is a little bit about the view corridor. This is something that we took great care, and I mentioned the last time we were here. The building, we moved it actually back a foot from its current location when we rebuild it, so that we're making sure that we're not in the view corridor of the Westerly buildings. That's that slide. And this is the, I believe this next one is, so that's the current building. This is built, I believe, in the 70s. It was a 32-unit apartment building when it was occupied at one time. It's been vacant since 2005, so really long time. And this is our vision for it. It's 24 foursale condominiums with parking underneath, and I'm gonna turn, actually, I'm gonna bring up the structural engineer. There was a question about the retaining wall that came up, and so I've asked Kevin Summons, the engineer, to come, and actually, even though he wrote a letter, to actually be here to address any questions. So thank you again for your time. I'm sworn in, so if I have to pop up to answer your questions, I'd be happy to, and thank you again.
State your name to the record. Do you swear affirm testimony during this review to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth?
All right, so swear.
State your name to the record and spell your last name.
Kevin Summons. Last name is spelled S-O-M-M-O-N-S.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Summons, just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a structural engineer. And for the benefit of the board, could you give the board members and the public the benefit of your experiences and certifications?
I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as 10 other states along the Northeast. I got my degree from Penn State University as an architectural engineer. It's a five-year degree, it's a bachelor's degree. Practiced engineering ever since, and have run my own firm for the last 20 years.
And licenses are current and up to date?
Licenses are current and up to date, along with continuing education.
Thank you. I'd ask of the board, except the credentials?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, you're familiar with the subject project, property and the project, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and I know you've written a letter, and we can mark that letter momentarily, but why don't you talk about the structural issues associated with the retaining wall?
It's a rather low retaining wall, plus or minus three to five feet in height. It's bordering two boundaries of the property. Now, the retaining wall is comprised of a keystone block or a modular block retaining wall, and partially of a sheet pile retaining wall.
Okay, and are there any other issues that you wanted to talk about in terms of some of the discussions that have been the center of conversation between the applicants and the board professionals?
Sure. The issue of vibration came up, and when driving sheet piles, in this case, it would be a vibratory installation. There can be some vibration, a large vibratory installation of sheet pile, not as much as a driven one, but there still is some vibration.
Could you keep your voice up, speaking from the mic?
But there still is some vibration.
Thanks.
And in order to mitigate that, what you do normally is you monitor that vibration at the adjacent buildings that are of concern.
And can that be effectuated in this scenario?
Yes.
Okay. Any special precautions which need to be addressed?
Not really.
Okay. Jason, did you have any?
Everything is at such close proximity, so if you were to do the monitoring and there was excessive vibrations at the adjacent buildings, or if the occupant or owners of those buildings express concern, what would be the strategy?
So the vibration limit would be around .5 inches per second on the monitors. In my experience, for similar projects that have actual pile driving, generally, when you get into 20 feet or so near the adjacent building, you start to reach that limit, that .5 meter, inches per second, and then you would go to something else. In this case, we're significantly away from the adjacent buildings, two significant ones. The garage is tight, but if you do manage to reach that, then you would have to reassess your game plan. But we wouldn't anticipate that in this case.
So there's segmental block for a portion, right?
That's correct.
And then sheet pile for the other portion. What is the strategy for not doing block the entire block?
Well, we didn't have the depth to develop the mass that we needed for the retaining situation. We would have to go onto adjacent properties.
And was helical considered?
Helical piles can't be used for a retaining wall. Helical piles are like a timber pile that you drive into the ground, and they take a gravity load or a downward force only.
Okay. Did your, this letter, was this letter sent?
Yes, this letter was sent.
Okay. Mr. Serpigo, should we mark that letter into?
Yes.
I believe we're up to A5, and that is, A5 is a letter from your office, correct?
Correct.
To Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Zoning, and stated October 10th, 2019. Do you have an extra copy here, or no?
I do not.
Okay, I'll get that one, and we'll mark that momentarily. Mr. Chairman, do any of the board members have any questions for this witness?
So, in the areas where you are using sheet pile, are you gonna leave it as exposed sheet pile wall?
That's correct.
And it's what, like corrugated?
Right. Have you ever seen a bulkhead, or?
Yeah.
Yes, that's exactly what you'd be, that's exactly what it is.
And are there any attempts to screen it? I mean, it's, having exposed sheet pile is usually not the most aesthetically pleasing.
I can't speak to that.
We'll, we'll speak with the architect, and we'll, we'll address that if we can come back to that question. I'll make a note so we don't forget that.
Anyone else on the board have any questions? Questions?
Would the applicant be averse to doing any preconstruction survey?
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Would the applicant be agreeable to doing a preconstruction survey of adjacent structures?
No, we actually, I think that's an important thing, to get a baseline condition of the surrounding problem.
Thank you.
I think that is important to do the preconstruction surveys, and also very carefully monitor the vibrations that are going on in the area. If all goes well, great, but that is definitely something we're monitoring closely.
So, is the preconstruction survey something that we can build into the resolution?
Yes.
And we would consent to that.
Any questions from the public for this witness?
Jason, did you have more questions? Or was it covered? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with your consent, I'd like to call up our architect, Dan Condatore.
Do you swear affirm testimony during this review to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing of the truth?
I do.
State your full name to the record and spell your last name.
Daniel Condatore, C-O-N-D-A-T-O-R-E.
All right, good evening and welcome. And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed?
Yes, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. And for the benefit of the board and the public, can you please briefly recite your qualifications and certifications and licenses?
Sure. I graduated from Roger Williams in 2001 with a bachelor's degree in architecture. I was, took my first exam and got my license in 2008. I've been a licensed architect in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Florida. Since then, I've owned, been a partner in mode architects for the last two and a half years, and I currently do a lot of similar residential and retail projects throughout the state of New Jersey.
And I believe you've testified before the Asbury Park Planning Board and Zoning Board before?
I believe yes.
Thank you for accepting that, Mr. Chairman. Okay, and just for the record, you're familiar with the application, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the subject property?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you, I know we had some architectural, some questions about some market, why don't you describe the architectural features?
Sure.
And then there were some other questions that we'll go back to.
Okay, well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to work on this project with Trip. It's been a great opportunity for us, and we really think we put a building together that really fits well within the community and the waterfront zone. What I have up here right now is the ground floor plan. So here is, as you can see, is on the, on the ground floor, facing the street, which would be looking at the plan south, is a secondary den for the units upstairs. So what we tried to do, quite simply, is activate the street with the residential. So those, those units, the secondary units to the units above, kind of create a buffer between the more functional uses that happen at this floor, as far as storage, trash collection, electrical rooms, and things like that. So those are all kind of hidden and buffered behind the space. And then even beyond that, you could see we have our parking spaces. So we have tandem spaces to one side, then we have single spaces as you park into the building. And one of the questions that came up during your review was that the proposed drive aisle was originally 21 feet. We felt, working with the engineers and communicating from them and the planner, that 21 feet was a little tight for what we were trying to achieve. So we're committed to increase that to 22-foot drive aisle. It's not indicated on this plan currently, but we will be able to make that work. I think it's important to note that by doing this, we're taking it from our building square footage, kind of where the stair locations are. So the overall footprint is not increasing, the overall location of the building on the site is not increasing. It's getting taken up eternally. So when we're looking at the plan, you can easily see that we have a central staircase off the street that enters into a lobby, which also connects through the back to the park. On the right side of the plan, behind the units, is our trash collection room. So what we'll have is, we'll have a trash chute that connects to the floors above, where the residents are able to, you know, through the hallway, there's a room that trash down to chute. It's able to, it's a trash chute that's controllable, that's able to disperse recycling and regular refuse by selecting the bottom, you could swivel the head. That will be placed into, you know, about one-yard plastic garbage cans, and then the building maintenance team will have to, you know, as those cans fill up, there's room for storage. So all, that whole room, we can, we could fill with cans. And approximately once or twice a week, the maintenance team will wheel those cans out to the right where the drive aisle is, and they will be picked up and then, and brought away, and then the cans will be returned back to the trash room. One of the other things that you see on the left side of the plan, real quick, is the actual individual storage units. So each unit will have its own 3x7 storage cage for like bikes and things like that, whatever they need for the beach, chairs, everything. So we think that's a good feature. And also, on that left side is the ADA access, or the second ADA access. We have two ADA access points, one from the street, which comes on the left side of the building and enters through that, that storage room. And then we have the primary ADA access also, where the parking spaces are, and the residents will actually park. Also, on this level, in front of the units, there is a little ground patio for each of those residents, for, you know, tables and chairs and things like that. Again, another way to activate the street. So this is our second floor plan, so comprises, comprises of, you know, several unit types. There's two bedroom types, there's one bedroom unit types. Each unit has approximately a seven-foot by 17-foot balcony associated with each one. The units at these levels, like I said, the ones in the front, where the street side of it, have a staircase that connects directly to the, the den spaces, those secondary spaces below. And then in the middle on the plan, sorry, I usually stand there right in front of the screen, but the microphone's over here. In the middle, you can see there's a corridor right adjacent to the elevator that will walk you out to the amenity deck. So the amenity deck is in the rear, where we have a lower level of like areas for seating and gathering, and then there's a higher platform with a small pool in the middle of those two areas, and that's just, you know, space for the residents to hang out, barbecue, entertain. Also, on the upper right corner of that plan, you'll see a secondary access to, access stair that could take you down directly to the drive aisle. So if the residents are coming in off the beach, they don't need to go through the building to get to the amenity deck. They'll have access directly from the, from the outside. Quarter serviced by two egress staircases at each end, and you can see the elevator in the middle. This is the third floor, so, you know, the plans are similar to the second, except for they do not have any secondary space above or below, but they lay out to be about 1,200 square foot, and issue of two bedrooms on the exterior, the corner-facing units, and then, you know, one bedroom on the interior. It's basically the same as the floor below. Go ahead, check. These are the third-level plans, so very similar again. I'm not going to go through, you know, the layouts of them, but these now will connect to small, like penthouse rooms on the roof deck, so they're private. So when we get to the roof deck, you'll see that there's these little areas, there are about 360 square feet of space for those, for those people to use. So this is our, what I call the penthouse or the roof deck level. So these, you can see, there's a small bathroom, just a place to hang out, and then there'll be a patio out front there on the roof deck. It's also important to note on this plan, in the center, you can kind of see the square where the elevator kind of protrudes. To north and south of that, there is a six-foot screening fence. So in that zone is where we'll house all of our mechanical units. So these are small, these are not big hand handler-type units, these are residential condensing units like you have at your house, so they're no more than, you know, 36 inches off the roof elevation, and this fence itself is six feet tall, and it's held about 26 feet from the perimeter of the power pit. So it was important for us to screen the units, so there's no visibility from the street of any kind of mechanical equipment on the roof here. So this is just basically two-sided elevation. You can see the amenity deck, the back area, and the stairs coming down. Once we get to the rendering, so I'll kind of go through the architecture style itself, so we can go through those elevations again. So this is a section here. So you can see, this is a section that we cut through the building. The street would be on your, the left, and then the rear's on, the rear of the many decks on the right. And you can see the area on the roof where we'd be able to screen the camping units from the street. There's no sightline from the street that ever hit those units. So overall, you know, the building architecture itself is... In the waterfront redevelopment zone, there's three basic styles of architecture that kind of guide you as to what the architectural features of the building will be. It's quickly the Mediterranean revival, the arts and crafts, and the modern style. You know, we chose to use the modern style as our kind of basis of design. It's primarily expressed through the use of white stucco and industrial lighted glass. It was, you know, happened in a modern era of architecture, similar to art deco, but a little more minimalism. The primary styles or expressions in this style are also the expression of the horizontal. So you can see how that is expressed through the bands at each floor level. You can see on the ground floor, you know, we still tried to establish a base in the building by contrasting the upper floors that have, you know, a lot of glass and a lot of transparency, you know, tried to hold that base. And then you can see the roof canopies at the top, so there'll be some shading devices up there. One of the cool features of this building that we, we came up with with Trip is this ability, so this building faces south, you get a lot of sunlight coming into these units. We created these, not created, we found these sliding screens, so these screens are on a track at the top and the bottom, and they're able to move along the building. So it creates a really cool dynamic for the building, so it doesn't ever seem static, you know. Really kind of plays on solid and void and what the building could be. You know, they're primarily, they're a pre-manufactured system with pre-finished aluminum. They're made for this type of environment. They'll weather well. They won't rot and deteriorate. At each floor level, you can see, on the rooftop level, we're using a cable-style railing, so it'll be, you know, stainless steel cable with a black square post and then a wood cap. And then at the top, we'll be using an aluminum-style shading device, so, and those are pretty advanced as well, too. They come with, they're powered, and those blades can change depending on the sun and things like that, so that's a nice feature for the building. But again, primarily, we're using stucco for our base material, and then on the right side there, we're using a Trex-type AZEC TimberTech composite wood-looking for, for the screening, for the cladding on the side. Originally, we had found a product that we liked, it was called Inowood. It was out of Australia, it was made out of recycled materials, and all these, had these great benefits, but it just, the company itself fell short of delivering what we wanted to. So I know there was a lot of concerns to the environment, to the weather, and how that would age, and we didn't see enough information from them to kind of have a proof of concept, so we went away with more, you know, well-known or, you know, popular materials, like pre-finished aluminum. The windows themselves will be a black anodized aluminum, you know, so we think a better building will age well over time. So that's really the primary architecture of what we're trying to do. I know there was a list of waivers for design things, and quite simply, for most of them, it's just that, you know, that design guideline's like a broad stroke of all these different things that you could do, and it's like plug and play, and we felt that, you know, with the type of architecture that we're, and the modern style that we're trying to use, that some of those things just didn't align themselves with our building, and, you know, we seek waivers on those items.
Can you, if you don't mind, and whenever you're ready?
Yeah.
Can you identify what those specific waivers are?
Yeah, we can go through them. Primarily, they're in the planning review letter. Page, is it 512 it starts? So page 512, dated September 18, 2019. A, building parts, the openings on frontage must remain within a solid-to-voy ratio of no more than 45 percent, includes finish trace and porches arcades. I mean, we don't specifically meet that solid, that solid-to-voy ratio, but we felt that using the screens, although they're not fixed items, they are movable, and they do serve the same intent as the solid-to-voy. B, building parts, item six, balconies are elements of vernacular, but they must be used sparingly. sparingly. These pertain to intended balconies, lodges, and cantilevered ones, the effect of the facade is saturated, but balcony is not less disruptive than all-glass buildings. We do have balconies, I'm not, it's kind of a gray, I really don't think we align ourselves with that. I felt like this, that is written more for, you know, apartment building that has cantilevered balconies at the front that protrude, and it's just a constant row of them. I don't think we have that here, so looking for a waiver for that. Windows shall be single, double-hung or triple-hung or casements, openings shall be rectangular with vertical square proportions. Multiple windows in the same rough opening shall be, you know, separated by four-inch minimum posts. Should read the whole thing?
Sure.
Okay. The centerline of the window sash shall align with the centerline of the wall, there shall be no flush-mounted windows. This is very specific, and it actually, to me, it just doesn't align with the style that's even recommended for the waterfront zone with the mullions, I think we have an industrial look that's consistent with the era of what we're trying to achieve. Building parts, item number twelve, the general characteristic of Mediterranean arts, crafts, modern-style vernacular is that of mass and weight showing frontage wall thicknesses. Is it integral to vernaculars? Under no circumstances shall windows be installed flush with the outer surface. You know, with the construction, the styles, and technology that there is today, recessing a window in an opening in depth creates more problems, especially in a high-wind and salt environment, where, you know, water, more likely for water infiltration. So these are, you know, windows that will be installed on the surface, and then up, the stucco will be applied after, so there will be a small couple-inch return at the windows, but, you know, the recess that they're looking for, we don't feel is, we're looking for a waiver on that. Window sills should be provided, and lintels may be shown, but the window sills should slightly overlap the width of the window opening without projecting wood to inches. No projecting window sills are provided. Again, if you look at the modern style of architecture, you know, they don't have, you know, sills and lintels on the top, that's just a different architectural style completely. Building elements, opening materials, windows shall be made of painted aluminum, wood, or vinyl, and shall have a clear glass. Doors, including garage doors, should be painted wood, or composite shutters shall be made of painted wood or hardy plank. So our doors are aluminum, so we're looking for a waiver there, just the type of building that we're doing, a contemporary building, so we're not going to install wood doors on the outside of our building. Building elements, attachments, configurations, yard equipment, and including HVAC, utility meters, clotheslines, satellite dishes, play equipment, hot tubs, and the like, shall be permitted at rear yards only. All of our equipment's mounted on a roof, so we believe we need to get a waiver for that. And I believe that was all the ones that I needed to address.
And I should have said this at the beginning, but when we're talking about a waiver, we're talking about the city's redevelopment plan has certain architectural standards, and we are deviating from some of those standards, as you just said.
Yes, yeah.
And that's why we need a waiver. And I guess it's always important to say, or to convince this board, that can these waivers be granted without causing substantial detriment to the public good? Are they going to compromise the architectural integrity? Are they going to compromise aesthetic appeal? Can you speak to that? Because I think what you're saying is, is what, you know, changing technology and things like that, this is better what we're providing.
I think this is, this is a better building, I think this is more in line with the architectural style of some of the other projects that are in the area that are currently in development and developed in the past. You know, I think that when this was written at the time, things were different, especially with, like I said, types of windows that we can get, the way they handle, the way they perform. So I don't, I don't think a waiver from those items deters the architecture that we're providing.
And do you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay, let me just add one final question here before we turn it over to the board. I know you talked about activating the street, and I think a lot of times, at some of the prior meetings, Mr. Sullivan's office was talking about basically incorporating and invigorating the development site with the street. Can you just speak about that again as we turn it over to the board?
Yeah, and I think it's a combination between myself and then the landscape architecture is not to create, you know, a cold wall, so to speak, where it's just doors. You know, there's a nice transition from the sidewalk with the greenery, the elevated terraces, and then the glass for the building. So it's not, you don't want to feel abrupt when you're walking against it, you want to feel comfortable, and I think that's something that we could create.
And you feel that this proposal does that?
Yes, absolutely. No, I want to go back to one thing, too, you mentioned about the piles. So you will not be able to see those piles, the only place you would see those would be from the garage, because they're in the back, and so there's going to be cars, it's screened from the public view.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for the witness at this time.
Or any questions?
Yeah, the, in regards to the windows, the building floor plates, they do extrude a little bit off of the front facade of the building, right?
They protrude, that is more the tracking system for the screens than it is, you know, but there is a protrusion, yes.
Right. Okay. And then I had a question about the, the access to the amenity deck in the back. Is there a plan to have access control for that?
Yes.
Okay.
That access, it's not portrayed in this.
That rendering part is not, no.
Rendering.
No, it would be where that car is straight ahead, it'd be a little stair goes up to the left.
You alluded to other buildings in the area that do not conform. Can you be more specific?
I don't, I would say, if you look at, this is not very similar, but the Monroe is, you know, in a waterfront redevelopment zone, that has, you know, a combination of balconies and walls across the front, similar to this, I mean, it's a different style, so to speak, but, I mean, we're in the same fashion, we're kind of in the same ballpark as that.
Sort of the ocean floor.
Yeah.
Doesn't quite do anything.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's great, the way you've described what the design theme is, I think you certainly captured that, it has kind of industrial feel to it. I like the sliding screens, because it kind of gives it a kind of beachy oceanfront feel, combined with the architectural elements, I think it's nice.
Thank you.
The green spot on the east end of the building, is that a bumpout? It looks like it's protruding into the street.
Now, that's an older rendering that the site has been up to. You're talking about where that pole is, right?
Right, where the transformers are up top? It looks like a bumpout to me.
Yeah, that got, that was in the original plan, but that was, that was since we moved through the review process with the engineering and the planning.
Okay.
It's just also shown on the, it's just dotted line on the, on the, yeah.
It's still shown on this one.
We'll take care of this. It's striping?
Yeah, it does say propose striping.
Oh, it's just striping, but it's not, it's not curving.
How many parking spots are we losing? The city losing?
I defer to Trip and move on.
Okay.
With that, I think it's several, maybe four or five.
Why is that, all that striping needed? It's taking the place of a bumpout.
Mike can pick you up.
So one of the things that we're doing is, we're eliminating one of the curb cuts. This property currently has two curb cuts. The curb cut on the left, which there's no parking there now, will have parking, so we're actually adding, I think probably two spaces in that, maybe as many as three. The new, the new design, which was, is part of waterfront redevelopment, eliminates that bumpout, it extends the island, so there's additional parallel parking along the island in front of the building. And also, all of the underground utilities go underground. We have a...
Do you have a plan?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Where's to extend the island?
I think you say in the I-Star infrastructure plan.
We go back to that plan, right?
Like, future construction.
Well, it's not a part of this?
No, it's I-Star.
Yeah, these, these site plans have to be revised to incorporate the master developer streetscape design, so it'll affect that bumpout area, the parking space layout, which utilities are underground, where, you know, spacing interventions and other things. We had asked the applicant to try and...
Right, because they're being made to pay into the...
Yeah, because the, the things shown on the site plan is not what's going to be built.
But they're being, as a subsequent developer, they have to pay into the infrastructure.
Correct.
Yeah, we have...
So, I mean, okay, no problem, Trip, I like the project. But how do I know, as you're building this, I-Star's making the island longer? And that's, I guess, not your nickel, but somebody's got to assure us of that.
Where's the, what we're looking for is the cut-through of the road.
Oh, that updated one?
Yes.
Oh, scroll through the site plans. Number eleven, Ted.
You go around the right one.
Can you zoom in on that area? So we can see where the first part of it?
I suspect that's grass utility poles.
Zoom in on it?
Yes, currently the curb line is, is out here, right? And this is all coming back, getting pulled back in, but that's not...
I think the curb line is where the end of the parking spot, sorry.
But I'm sorry, doesn't that show utility poles? Yeah. In that layout? That's not what's going to happen.
This is the plan that was provided by I-Star to us, what they wanted to do.
I don't think so, because that is exactly the same layout that was in the September version of the plan, or whatever, the previous version of the plan. So I don't know if it's just a sheet got, you know, overwritten or something, that's the same layout. I did the blue beam overlay, it's exactly the same.
Yeah, well, this is, we took their street layout, and they figured, oh, this doesn't have their alternate plan to extend that island across the front. That's going to be extended, so they're adding parallel parking, that's why they wanted to do that. By eliminating this sort of term, we can extend the island, have parallel parking, and we have our spots here. What we've done is we've added these spots here, which were originally the curb cut, which we've now added to the street.
Where, it says slate curb and slate wharf on the left. How is that transition going to occur?
So, you know, you have, you have something else. So this is what, you know, we're working with I-Star, but they're moving to the future, but they only gave us two, so they didn't really tell us to just like pass them.
Okay.
So...
Because that's an awkward transition.
Yeah, yeah, no transition. So all that stuff is in the right of way, so it's really kind of like, we're just out of our control of what we can do over there.
I think, I think what needs to happen is that, as part of the resolution is that we will work with I-Star to prepare a plan that will show everything that they're going to do. We have an agreement with them for the utilities, for all of this to go underground, for to extend the island and put in the new lights, everything is there. That's our agreement to its sign. So we're waiting now for them to give us that plan. We will make that part of our items that we have to prepare after tonight to check the boxes that we need to have, and we will have that plan for you, so we'll incorporate it.
Okay, thank you.
Just curious, is there any more comments from our planner and engineer concerning these?
Not on the architecture.
Well, we're getting into more than just the architecture now, we're getting into site plan, and we can come back to that.
Any questions from the audience for the...
High earnest, we only found a deal like that, that's very hard. So architecturally, the, I'm looking at the picture of the existing building online.
Yes.
And is there a difference in the setback between your proposal and the existing structure?
Yes, ours is actually further from the street than the existing building.
I'm sorry?
Ours is actually further from the street than the existing building, we pushed it back.
Okay, so all that foliage in the front and grass is for architectural, I guess, landscaping, aesthetics, and it's not like you came forward, you actually went back.
Yes, that's, that's true.
Oh, you added a floor, yes?
Yes.
The existing building is three floors, yes?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. The existing building had how many units? Apartment?
Thirty-two, I think.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. And this one has, what, forty?
Twenty-four.
Forty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. I guess so you made less units but bigger units, correct?
That's right.
The original height of the building was what? The, I'm sorry, of the original thing?
I don't know the original height of the building offhand.
Three stories.
Three stories, thirty feet, thirty...
No, not three stories.
The original building, you asked about the original building, it's three stories.
Who's answering me?
I'm answering you right now.
So you're saying the height is three stories? I don't know what that means. What's a story?
About ten feet per floor or something.
Plus or minus thirty feet?
No, no, I'm just asking what a story, you said it's three stories, is it a twelve-foot story, an N-foot story, an I-foot story?
Thirty to thirty-five feet.
What, I'm sorry?
Thirty to thirty-five feet was the original building height, somewhere in that range.
In that range. You know, range is important to neighbors.
The building is the one that was being torn down, so it's going to be a higher building.
Now we're really moving around. Okay, so, so the footprint from left to right, front to back, the footprint of the building, is it pretty much a similar footprint to the existing building?
It's a little bit larger towards the back than the original building, if you count the amenity deck.
A little larger. So you added the fourth floor, you decreased the density of units, but not necessarily of people. And then, of course, you added the amenities on the roof deck, correct?
There are amenities on the roof, yes, that's correct.
Are they called penthouses?
You could call them penthouses, yes.
I think that's what you called them. Is that for habitation, or just for the pool? What is up there that people are going to be occupying with?
People like to have roof decks, people like to have roof decks, or access to a roof for their own entertainment, so they can have barbecues up there, they could have guests, they can have a TV room, another, it's like having a finished basement, except for it's on the roof.
I get it, I think, I think everybody in the city would like to do something like that, it's just most people are turned down. But, so in other words, what you're saying is, you've actually added another usable level? I guess people are up there, they're going to be barbecuing, watching TV, you talked about, the penthouse units are for what? To come home from the beach and take a shower?
No, they're, just what I said, they're, they're secondary to the unit below.
Okay, I ask.
They are secondary to the unit below.
Am I running out of time, Mr. Chairman? Okay. So the penthouse units are used for what?
They're accessory to the unit below, so the, people on the fourth floor have the availability to go up a set of stairs to their private roof deck, that can be used all seasons.
That's great. And they could do that from in their unit, like with the spiral stairs?
It's the only place they get to, is it from your unit, you have no access to it from outside the unit.
So are you actually calling the fourth floor and the rooftop penthouses? Because really, it's contiguous, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's a, yeah, it could be considered a mezzanine level, too.
We can all get along, I could tell.
It could be considered a mezzanine level, a more technical term.
Well, I don't know if I can ask an architect, but when you, when you, in the offering, are they called penthouse units?
I'm not sure how they're going to mark them.
All right, you're not sure. Okay, so... Okay, so, the, for architectural design, I believe you, you notify everyone within, what, two-hundred feet?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Do you recall, do you recall?
No, that's not correct.
Oh, it's not correct? What is correct?
You don't notify people within two-hundred feet for architectural design.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You notify people within two-hundred feet of a pending application for development before order.
Which includes?
All inclusive.
Everything, okay.
Every, but not just architectural.
No, okay, I appreciate that clarification. So, you know, I'm... I don't know. I guess I can't ask the architect, are there any neighbors here? It's not a good question, is it?
No.
No, okay, so let me move on.
Yes.
What? So, who, what I ask in this process, the architect, the structural engineer, who would I ask the age of the list of notification that was used? Meaning, and I'll tell you why. Sometimes I come here and the plan is...
This is for you to ask the question about the architectural design.
Can I ask the, okay. Do you know the...
Notification or parting the surrounding area.
Okay. So from what I understand, what I understand is either a written or a close written acceptance rule in Asbury that two-hundred-foot notifications...
We're not talking about notification, we're talking about the design of the building. If you have questions about the design of the building, feel free to ask those. We're not talking about notification, this is an architect, he has nothing to do with notification.
Wait, the attorney just said it affects all the domains, the architect...
You don't have questions about the design of the building? Ask questions about the design.
I better move on, because now we're...
That's irrelevant to the testimony of the architect.
Okay, no, no, look, Mr. Serpico, I understand.
Good, then keep going.
You know what I mean? You're on the team, I understand. When we ask too many questions, it gets sour. So...
You don't have questions prepared?
No, I do, I do. It's hard, you have to be a lawyer to figure out how to talk to you, because you interrupt us at every juncture. What I want to know is, were the neighbors, who, looking at this, looking at this as an architectural thing, the neighbors, by this design with the rooftop being used and the fourth level, are being dwarfed from sunrise, sunset? That's an architectural thing that's important to the neighbors.
Mr. Chairman.
This building, I'm looking at the original picture, dwarfs, it looks like it dwarfs the other building.
Mr. Chairman.
It looks like you took off something...
If, if, if I may respectfully...
Okay, respectfully, thank you.
...for one second, I would respectfully submit that that's not a question for the architect, that's a comment which he can make at the comment section. I would respectfully suggest that this is just an opportunity for questions of the architect based upon the information.
Why did I think you would agree? In other words, the size and design of the building by the architect...
You asked a question.
The size and design of the building by the architect, the design of the building, I can't ask a question, is it bigger and doesn't it look like it kind of dwarfs the neighbors? That's not an architectural question.
That's an opinion, that's not, that's not...
It's not an opinion, I'm asking his opinion, not mine. I'm saying, does he think as an architect, does that new design dwarf the neighbors? Both with a rooftop thing where they're going to be partying up there and making noise, and then when you look at just a little piece of what you can see of the neighbors, that person on the left just lost their sunrise? And that's an architectural thing by design.
Thanks for your comment.
Okay, my comment is, did you consider the neighbors when you designed that?
I do have, when someone has a house, they're not entitled to all that air and space that's adjacent to them. You don't, you don't buy a house and say, this is all I have, I give this for eternity. So your question is...
Yeah, but I'm not asking you, I'm asking the architect.
He obviously thinks that's the design, so he answers it as appropriate.
Look, do you mind if I ask the architect?
You did.
I know, then why are you...
Because you're just rambling, as you always do, you're just rambling.
Can you please ask?
Yes.
You know, that's why you're the most rambling, inefficient board I've ever seen, how's that?
We have to stop this. This has to stop.
Let's stop, thank you.
Let's stop, okay.
When they start to insult people...
Stop, let's just stop. If you have, if you have an answer about...
I do, but I don't want to...
I'm talking to him. If you have an answer regarding, do you feel that your design dwarfs the contiguous property owners?
No.
Okay, here's your answer. He answers your question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you think, since we can't see the pictures of the, let's say, the block, from left to right, from east to, north to south, east to west, now, I think architects, we'll all admit that the existing building looks like an abandoning, an abandoned I-STAR, but the question is, do you think this design, the motif, this design, might be a little too modernistic? And do you think those things on the roof actually make it look a little bit odd in the neighborhood? Because I'm asking your architectural opinion, in my opinion?
No, no, ask him, we don't want your opinion. He's got to answer your question.
No, I believe the architecture is consistent with the guidelines provided in the waterfront redevelopment zone.
No, no, I was asking, for the existing neighborhood, do you think it fits in?
That the waterfront redevelopment zone considers the existing neighborhood and the historical architecture of Asbury Park.
Okay, so, so that's another, what you're saying is, it fits in with the future development, redevelopment plan, but you're not necessarily comparing it to the existing buildings that are probably going to be there for another twenty, thirty years. Is that correct?
That's not what I said, no.
No? All right. I think it's a simple architectural question. Do you think it blends with the existing buildings that it's adjacent to, the neighborhood?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Do you have any other...
Yeah, I do, I have another... Why is it that we're looking at pictures and plans that someone's suggesting belong to I-STAR? Is this an I-STAR project?
That's not, that was not a suggestion.
Oh, it's not an I-STAR? It's not a question?
No, this is a, a subsequent redevelopment, not an I-STAR development.
So then, why is the architect referring these are I-STAR's plans?
No, they're not, he didn't say that. She didn't say that, he's referring to the streetscape plan in the future for I-STAR, not the building.
I thought I heard that structurally, architecturally, in every way, it's in some kind of, some kind of union with, with I-STAR.
You didn't, no, you didn't.
I heard, I misheard?
Yeah, you didn't hear that.
Okay, so I never heard anyone say I-STAR and plan.
No, you heard somebody reference to what you're saying.
But they're referring to the streetscape.
Well, whose bump out plan was that? Architecturally?
No, it's not, that's not an architectural question, that's a site plan question, but it's fine, it is, I, the bump out originally, I think, was the old plan, correct, Jim?
What was that, the I-STAR plan?
I have no idea. That was their book.
That's what he testified. Said he's going to update it. Think it should have been updated before he came in here, to let people see what it really looks like. I think I've overstayed my welcome.
As usual, thank you. Anyone else?
He has questions, they say you're rambling. Pretty nerve.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with your consent, I'd like to bring up our landscape architect, Mr. Melillo.
Sure. We're going to swear you in.
I do. Joseph Melillo, M-E-L-I-L-L-O.
All right, good evening, Mr. Melillo, and just for the record, you are testifying tonight in your capacity as...
As a landscape architect.
Okay, and good evening, and for the benefit of the board and the public, why don't you recite some of your qualifications and certifications and licenses you maintain?
Sure. I received my Bachelor of Arts degree in landscape architecture from Pennsylvania State University. Subsequent to that, I began working for Melillo &amp; Bauer Associates, which I am now a partner of. Our firm has been practicing for approximately forty years. I am a licensed landscape architect in the states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I've been accepted as an expert witness in multiple planning boards, including this one, throughout the state, inclusive of Long Branch, Jersey City, Township of Monroe.
And licenses and certifications are current and up to date, correct?
They are, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that the board exempt, thank you. You're familiar with the site and you're familiar with this project, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, why don't you just talk about the landscaping features of this project?
Sure, good evening, everyone. So, let's start at the front of the building, or the south, or the bottom of the, of the page, as we're looking at the plan this evening. So within, so there's the front entry of the building that's located in the, in the center. When you come away from the building, there's a set of stairs that lead you down to the, to the sidewalk. The new streetscape improvements within the right of way consist of new sidewalk, new decorative paving within the tree planting area, street trees, a street light that is in keeping with the new street lights being installed elsewhere within the waterfront redevelopment area, a bench, bike rack, trash receptacle, recycling receptacle, all within the, the right of way. There currently are two existing utility poles with Cobra head light fixtures that are proposed to remain currently. Once we get a little north of the sidewalk improvements, there are landscape improvements that lead up to the private terraces the architect had mentioned earlier, that come out of the ground floor units of the building. They each have their private terraces, as you can see, to the right and left of the main entrance. They also have a little tiny yard area, if you will, with lawn and planting that's surrounded or enclosed by a low garden wall, approximately three feet in height. Outside of the garden wall, to the south, are landscaped beds and lawn areas. Within those beds, we've proposed a mixture of shrubs and perennials, native shrubs and perennials for, for most of it. There is a small lawn area as well that has a depression in it to accommodate some runoff from the site, so that's not running directly onto the sidewalk into the south. To the west, we have the walkway, the, the architect also had mentioned, that leads back to the bike storage room on the western side of the building. And in the rear of the building is the parking lot that is, that is covered by the amenity deck that was referred to earlier. We also had prepared a lighting plan for this property, or this project. So on the west, southern, western, and eastern sides of the building are building mounted light fixtures, wall sconces, if you will, mounted approximately ten feet in height on the south and eastern side of the building. But on the western side of the building, we wanted to be a little more cautious with the neighboring property to the west. We have a light fixture that is mounted lower to the ground to just illuminate the, that walkway on the western side, and, and to not spill any light onto the residential property to the west. In addition, we prepared a lighting plan for the amenity deck, which is surrounded by light fixtures that are mounted to the screen wall that the architect has shown in their plans, that surround the amenity deck. They are very small boxed light fixtures that are mounted just to the post, shining down and out to illuminate the perimeter of the, of the amenity deck. There are some bollard lights in the central portion of the amenity deck, as well as some of those same wall sconces, the, the lower ones that are mounted lower to the ground as, as on the west side. Those are used to illuminate the ramp that leads from the lower level, when you immediately exit the building onto the amenity deck, to the upper level to the north of that, to access the pool area. This, this evening, we are requesting, if you could go back to, to the rendering, thank you, this evening, this, this plan is in keeping with the waterfront redevelopment guidelines and plan. However, we are requesting two waivers this evening for the landscape portion. Some of the, these two items were mentioned in the, in the engineer's report. The one item is referred to as buffer strips and internal plantings. This requirement requires that if you have a parking lot of more than five parking spaces, which we do, ten percent of that lot is planted. That becomes challenging on this site because the parking lot is covered, so we cannot meet that requirement, and we're asking for relief from that requirement. The second item we're asking for relief from this evening is noted in the waterfront redevelopment plan as acceptable level of development intensity. There are three requirements for this. Maximum ninety percent impervious coverage, the engineer had testified earlier or spoke to that we will comply with that requirement. The second requirement is minimum of herb and shrub cover of five percent. We do comply with that item as well. Lastly, it requires a minimum tree planting of five percent of the property. While we are currently showing the installation of five street trees, we do not meet this requirement. Given the testimony you heard earlier from the architect and the, the, the design aesthetic or, or design decision that we want to open and activate this to the streetscape with private patios for the ground floor residents and have that be open to the street so that you can see that, if we were to install the trees to attain that five percent number, we would have to add approximately eleven trees to meet that requirement. If you use the five trees there as a guide, adding those additional trees would now screen that, that, those private terraces from the street and deteriorating that activity that we're hoping to achieve here with this project. So we are asking for the board to grant us relief from that, from that requirement as well.
Okay, and just in terms of, again, and I thank you, you stole the question out of my mouth, in terms of how you're going to incorporate the, so now we have the, how to incorporate the development project into the streetscape, and we had the architect provide testimony, and now you provided testimony, and thank you for rounding out that picture. And just, even though we are requesting a waiver of those two elements that you just talked about, is it going to compromise the overall aesthetic appeal of the site at all? Is it going to look like underplanted? It's not, correct?
No, it won't, it will not look underplanted, it'll look very nice and attractive to complement the nice architecture that's, that's been proposed for this project.
And in fact, your testimony was to actually comply with that last element would actually sort of detract from the overall interaction of, of the streetscape?
Yeah, for, for this project, it would detract from the goal of it to activate the streetscape, yes.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions for the, this witness.
I have a question about the, I noticed on the narrative, and you mentioned it too, the depression and the lawn area for runoff. I, I probably missed it, but I was looking for whether you're using the conventional turf or like a native Karex or something in that lawn area.
The, the lawn area is proposed currently to be a turf, grass, but it is depressed to, to retain the water as it's coming out of the planting beds that are just to the north of it.
Right, so it's just the water that's coming? It's really the water that makes it out of those beds?
It's the water that comes out of those planting beds that would just be detained or slowed down within that, that depression of the lawn, yes.
Okay, and did you, I mean, is it in, is it in the notes, I probably missed it, where something, I just didn't see anything about the, that, I mean, the actual lawn species or anything like that? I'm, I'm, I'm going to, I'm sure it's in there, but I was just trying to understand exactly how that section was being built, and I think I missed it.
Sure. I, you know, I don't know that it's specifically called out in the, on the planting plans of what species of lawn that is, but it is...
Regular turf.
Regular turf, yeah.
Did you consider using a Karex or something that would absorb more, or it just was more the aesthetic look of...
The, the aesthetic was to get a, a low, almost lawn in the front, you know, somewhat to create that, that front yard, kind of typical front yard look. But then we quickly go into planting beds that have lower perennials, higher ornamental grasses, and hydrangeas and roses as well, within the, the planting beds just to the north of that lawn area. So between the lawn area and the, the garden walls.
Because I realize it's not a lot of water, probably, I just know that we always have these issues with flooding and that the native would absorb, absorb more water, and you could still keep it mode low, and that just the root system might be a little bit more productive in terms of managing the water, just a thought of that.
Who is going to maintain the lawn area between the sidewalk and the garden wall and between the garden wall and the building itself?
I would have to defer that to the, to the owner of the property.
I'm speaking to the microphone, just a sec, yeah.
between the garden wall and the building itself?
I would have to defer that to the, to the owner of the property.
Like, speaking to the microphone just a sec, yeah?
The property will be professionally managed and all of the grass and shrubs will all be cut, uh, by the ownership, including the grass between the curb and the sidewalk and the sidewalk and our building.
Uh, as far as the, uh, the swell you're talking about, uh, to detain some of that runoff that might come from the, uh, lawn area, uh, just south of the building itself, uh, have you gone into any kind of a rain garden design, or is it just going to be a swell? Is it gonna have an overflow? Is it gonna flow directly across the sidewalk? What?
Sure. No, no, uh, currently, uh, it is a depression without any, uh, overflow measures, so it would, it would go to the, onto the sidewalk, if it were to overflow. It was not designed as a quote-unquote rain garden. Uh, this was in reaction to a comment that was generated in the, excuse me, uh, in the TRC, uh, as a result of the TRC meeting, to provide measures to slow down some of the runoff from the site.
Did you consider rain gardens at all?
Uh, we, we had thought about rain gardens, uh, but we really wanted to keep that, that front, that, that lawn area for the front yard aesthetic.
Can't do both?
It is, uh, they are different, they are different looks. Uh, it would be a, it would be more planting from the sidewalk back to the walls would be pretty much all planting at that point to accommodate the rain garden.
Okay.
So the Carex would achieve a similar, I mean, Carex has a similar look in terms of that, I mean, there's sort of a happy medium there.
Do you have other questions?
The, uh, the grass strips in the back, uh, in the garage portion, are those, will those be irrigated and do they drain?
All, all of the planting beds that you see are proposed to be automatically irrigated.
Okay.
Yes.
More questions?
The depressions in front, just a quick comment for your consideration. Uh, that's something that would have to be, it's not a big deal, but it would have to be engineered just to make sure that that water will go into the ground within 72 hours to prevent mosquito breeding and that kind of thing.
So that'd be something, you said the resolution?
Yeah.
So that it's trained.
Yes.
Audience, any questions?
Hi, my name's Michelle Gladen. I'm 206 Second Avenue.
Can't hear you, Michelle.
Hi, my name's Michelle Gladen, 206 Second Avenue. I just have a quick question. I'm just, uh, for the record, since you brought up the lighting plan, could you just talk a little bit about the lighting plan to the, at the north end of the building? You spoke about the east, um, south, and west, but I didn't hear anything about what's happening against that building facing your back neighbors?
Sure. Uh, currently, the, the, the only light, uh, proposed on the, on the north side of the building are lights underneath the, the covered parking area to illuminate the, the parking spaces underneath the, uh, amenity deck. And there, there are no exterior lights mounted, mounted to the building facade, uh, to the north. Uh, in addition to that, on the amenity deck itself, there are lights to, to illuminate the amenity deck level, uh, but they are all, uh, directed inward and, and in and of itself.
And those at the second story level?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Caruso, you were previously sworn. Do you want us to swear them in again, Jack? Please.
Yes, I do. Daniel W. Caruso, C.A.R., U.S.O., professional engineer in New Jersey.
All right, your qualifications were already accepted, uh, so you're testifying in your capacity as a professional engineer, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I just know, uh, you finished up your testimony, and I know we had, uh, the board's professionals were good to meet with us and wanted, uh, and tell about some of the substance and results of those conversations.
Well, we went through the, the, the review letters and, uh, basically agreed what we would do, and, uh, we've made 90% of those revisions and are in the process of finishing them up. There is a second letter, basically just outlining a couple things that I knew we still have to finish, and if you want to just go through them, they're pretty much a repeat of the last letter, just, uh, re-highlighting that they still, uh, need to be finalized.
I don't think we need to. I mean, if you guys want to, we can. We, we went through them last time. They're, they're willing to comply. There was, uh, one change that was made. Uh, Dan, if you want to describe it, how you changed the stormwater system.
Oh, yes. Yeah, originally, we had designed the, uh, stormwater management to be a recharge system under the parking and, uh, in, at its pro- close proximity to all the footings of the structure. We decided to, uh, design it as a detention basin, hold it and control the water out so that we don't have, you know, infiltrated water around all the foundations. So we designed the system as a, a detention basin underground in the parking lot and control it out to the, uh, existing inlet. Same as, same principle as the infiltration, except that, uh, we did not want to saturate the ground around the footings.
And the, the, uh, off-site flows post-development would not exceed?
Yes, everything is, uh, the flow rates coming out of our detention is controlled to less than the existing conditions in all of the storms from the two-year up through to 100-year storm.
And then there was some technical aspects to that, which they've agreed to comply with, so that, that's the most significant engineering change.
If you're happy with that?
Happy.
What, what are the design storms that you're using for this?
I'm running a rate through, two-year rate through to 100-year storm.
One question, I'm not sure if it's for you, Trip, who, um, for the demolition and then the rebuilding, uh, staging area, on your property, are you gonna have to use any street or right, city right of way?
No. The only... The only thing that we may need to do is, um, temporary dumpsters. We're, we'll have, we'd have to rent the spaces from the city and provide the dumpster in front, but everything else can be staged there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for this witness.
Or questions? Audience? Okay. There you go. Let's go.
I'm speaking only, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park. Uh, so I, uh, here this engineer, the structural engineer for the project, yes? Sir?
Civil.
No?
Civil.
Civil, what?
Civil engineer.
Civil engineer. Okay. Uh, do we know when this, do you know when this building was built? The one that's on the property now?
They said earlier, testimony, it was sometime in the 70s.
Some.
Earlier, to, earlier this evening, something.
I would, safe to say it was built before 1978?
Sometime in the 70s.
Well, it'd be nice to know, because if it was, when you demolish a building, there's a whole set of PPA standards, OSHA standards, DOL standards, and did I say EPA standards that come into effect? Meaning, you have to pre-test certified demolishers, certified dumpsters, cert-
They have to meet the requirements.
Part of the construction permit process, correct?
Right. So they'll, they'll meet all the requirements when they get-
It's included in the permit?
The permits.
Huh?
When they get their demolition and construction permits, they, they have to comply with all the regulations our building department takes.
Okay.
These are compliance.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, towards the beach, you know, with wind, et cetera, and some of the buildings included, uh, asbestos too, and, and, especially lead, so certainly, I'm sure when they demolish, they'll supervise, and I don't think it's a problem when they're building, but when you're demolishing near the coast and it's windy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, especially for the neighbors, and it's a whole bunch of processes. So that'll all be complied with at the time of the permit. Uh, uh... So there's, there's, uh, mentions about, uh, are, are we talking about driving, uh, support pylons for the, for the foundation and structure? Is that why? No.
Not this week.
So, so this is kind of like a, a, a ground-up, uh, i- is there any part of this structure other than the foundation that'll be below ground?
He's the civil engineer, the site worker, not for construction.
Well, so they don't, they don't, they don't work together when they, architect-
That would be a question for him. He never testified any of that. That was unbelievable.
Okay. All right. Uh... So wait, I, I'm, I'm a little confused. Uh, when people build buildings, they use an engineer, yes? I, I, I don't know, is there a difference between an engineer who builds residential buildings and a civil engineer? That's kind of a question.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to the witness, and I want, uh, the member of the public to ask as many relevant questions as possible, but I just, that, some of this is beyond the, the scope of what, of what this witness testified to.
Well, he testified to his credentials.
He's a site, he's a site civil engineer.
Is it what?
Site, site.
Site, not building the site.
Oh, okay. See, that wasn't so bad. Thanks for your help.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, no, no further witnesses. I have a, a very, a brief summary to give, but I'll do that after, uh, any board questions and comments or public comment.
Okay. Do you want to confirm the board any comments?
Uh, Mr. Brooks, would you be amenable to a small cigarette butt receptacle in the front of the building?
Can I see the design first?
Uh...
No, Lev, yeah, so whatever, certainly no problem.
Okay.
Let's glue it.
All right. Any public comments? All right, Dan. Anything for your explanation?
Okay. Very, very briefly, I, I want to thank you for the time that you've all, uh, given this. This is a, a long road that we have been here, not before the planning board, but the preliminary steps to get here. Uh, we are very honored and very excited to be, uh, the, the maiden voyage, so to speak, of the, uh, lot-by-lot, uh, subsequent developer process. Um, we are seeking the preliminary and final site plan. Uh, as I've indicated, we are very excited to be here. We've gone through the TRC, we've gone through the informal presentation to the city council, and, and now you good people. Um, we are overwhelmingly consistent, uh, with the redevelopment, uh, plan and standards, but for the few, uh, design waivers that we needed. Um, in terms of the things you look for typically, uh, you want to make sure it's gonna look beautiful, and we think it is. You want to make sure it's gonna engineer, um, correctly, and we think it will, uh, particularly subject to the many conditions that you have placed throughout this process. Uh, so for those reasons, I am respectfully requesting that the board, uh, grant the preliminary and final site plan approval, and on behalf of, uh, Mr. Brooks and his team, I, I thank you for the, uh, the courtesies that not only you, but your professionals have extended us. Thank you. I would absolutely like them to design the design waivers as well.
Final design?
Ap- thank you very much, sir.
Jack, another question about, for, I guess, if you're gonna go over conditions?
Yes.
Um, do we need to put a condition in there that the streetscape, uh, improvements will be done? I'm not sure if they're being done by the master developer, or?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, I, I have that note, I'm not sure how to craft that.
Okay.
Uh, because this is the, yours is the first application I'm in under this new procedure, so I don't know how all of this timing and scheduling is going to work. Now, for example, I started to do the work before Trip built this project, how, I don't know how that would affect you negatively or positively. Can your project be built without what they intend to do being done? I guess, center, extension of the need, that wouldn't-
I, I think that, um, we're going to have to make sure that it gets done. I don't see how it's all gonna function together, because-
Right.
-we're really going from street to curb to, to green space to us executing our building. It really has to tie in together, especially with the lighting, the removal and putting it underground. So we have to get them hustling to actually get-
Is it kind of parallel parking in, I mean, uh?
On the island, there will be. Just the island right now, if you go out there, that has parallel parking on the island as it exists.
On your side of the first avenue?
Yes.
It's angled.
It's angled in front of the building?
Yeah, ours is angled, and then-
Okay.
-the idea was by extending the island, I'll call it the island, where currently it stops at the property just before us, they would be able to add additional parallel parking there and put in the, the lighting. It would be just like what's there currently extended further in front of our property.
So the way I, I have a number of conditions, and there's always a whole standard set of conditions, I'm for anything in front of the, uh, better boil it like that, but I would envision that this, these conditions regarding I-Star's participation, what they have to do and how it's gonna fall dovetail, is going to need some input from both Donna's office and Jason. Cause they're, I don't, I don't, I don't get involved with I-Star on that level, so I don't know what's been approved or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, I can envision it might be the kind of thing where, let's say, the, the master developer doesn't do the improvements before the building is ready to be opened, maybe they would come back before the planning board with a temporary plan for sidewalks to get approval, to get a CO? I don't know.
Well, that, that, that presents a problem for the, I'm sure, a major problem for the developer, because if I-Star were not to do what they were supposed to do, then that would just throw a monkey wrench into-
Right, well, so our subsequent developer agreement has a, um, has an understanding, a financial understanding of how we're gonna go about doing this. We were given an option of paying cash to do this or, or bond it, so we bonded it-
Right.
-to keep it in, in conjunction with everything else that's been improved in the waterfront. And the idea is that we, they would get started with it right away.
Right, okay.
That we would, that we would coordinate it. The building time of a build, a project like this is gonna be 12 to 14 months, so during that timeframe, we can, we can get it done.
From the comment that Trip just made, I would assume that it would make sense for me to take a look at this redevelopment, this redevelopment.
Yes.
I'll submit that to you.
Submit that and make that a part of this approval.
Yeah.
Because you mentioned that there's something, there's structural things in there, items in there that will make this all work.
Yes.
So we should make that a part and parcel of this approval and compliance therewith. So like, so-
Yes, but yes, that, that is a, an excellent idea, and that agreement, even if we didn't incorporate it, it exists, and, and we have no problem doing that. I think that's an excellent idea, Mr. Serpico.
Yeah, and I guess we're gonna see this in the future, so we should start to develop a procedure for this sort of thing going through.
It's the, um, it's the predecessor to every other lot-by-lot development that's gonna come in, and it was months in negotiation, so it should, um-
Hold up to all, not just us, but all future subsequent developers. And I also believe that there's a provision that, that the agreement gets recorded and things like that. There's, there's a whole, it's very-
Okay.
When I say it went through eight different levels of attorneys, it, it went through eight different levels of attorneys.
Yeah, how, how long is this?
Uh, it is-
It's not that bad.
Not so bad.
Thirty, 34 pages.
I like it, send through that.
In your sleep.
So I, I, the conditions that I have in addition to that, which I will develop with staff, okay, and with Kevin, talking to Trip, um, at least in, in very rudimentary terms, it's a pre-construction survey, uh, and the monitoring of the installation of that retaining wall, pile driving or whatever you call it, however it's gonna be done, and I'll talk to Jason about the language that you put in there to protect the city and protect the contiguous residents. Uh, plans are gonna be amended to show the drive out with to be 22 feet versus 21 feet.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, and this is the I-Star agreement, the bumpout's gonna be removed, the streetscapes are gonna be changed, and new streetscape improvements are gonna be put in as projected within a redevelopment's agreement, which is gonna be incorporated. Okay, and this is the I-STAR agreement, the bumpout's going to be removed, the streetscapes are going to be changed, and new streetscape improvements are going to be put in as projected within a redevelopers agreement, which is going to be incorporated in. The front yard swale, according to Jason's comment, must drain or percolate the standing water within, around within 72 hours. Basic, standard one is always compliance with the outstanding conditions and recommendations in Jason's report, which, when the two engineers spoke engineer speak, it sounded like they were on the same page.
Yes, sir.
Jason can tell me that, as he always does, and how to do that. There will be a correctly styled or created cigarette receptacle in the front of the property, so that it won't be obnoxious and look like one of those things when you get on the bus. And then the usual WRA conditions.
If I could add one, in the spirit of suspenders with a belt, can we just specify that we'll have a pre-construction meeting so that we can, among the other things, so that we could talk about the pre-construction survey, the laboratory monitoring, and also how the utility pole in the rear yard is going to be cared for, and if the lines need to be de-energized?
So give me some generic line present, all encompassing on residential. Second go around, make sure it's?
Yeah, we're fine with that, and we understand the sensitivity of the center pole in the back.
The buffer strip and the 5% tree planting waivers?
Well, that's, that's all part of the waivers. I outline those in the first page, on the first page. These are just the conditions of approval that will be, the area, this is now therefore being. Any others, or anything that I missed?
I just had a question. Can we be, is it too specific in the condition about the lawn to say, in parentheses, with, or is it with Jason? I mean, I don't know how that works, but in terms of?
You can ask for specifics.
Like an example of, again, those sedges, I'm saying that's what has to be done, but something like that, just to avoid that problem of soggy turf. I mean, that there's, as an option that's feasible.
To avoid soggy turf.
But to, I mean, I know there's a lot of ways to do, but one suggestion is to use Carricks, like a sedge, instead of a conventional turf.
Yeah, sure.
Something like that.
Sound okay?
Absolutely. We'll actually direct them to investigate that.
Motion to approve preliminary, preliminary and final site plan approval with those conditions.
And design waivers.
And design waivers.
I'll second. Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Menzel?
Yes.
Jennifer Sutter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
And Rick Flabber.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.
So our next item agenda is Boys and Girls Club of Monmouth County, 1200 Monroe Avenue, Block 1402, Lot 9, Scattered Site Development. Final, preliminary, final, and final site plan for accessory service parking.
Brooks, could you just move outside, please, with the conversation? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've noticed it's on this, and, and timing.
Jack, before we get started, I have a procedural question.
Yes.
I understand that this site, at one time, was on the scattered site redevelopment.
Still is.
It is.
It still is?
It is.
Okay, that answers my question.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jennifer Porter. I'm an attorney with Kiesa Shinian.
Sure. Sure.
Take her out.
They're very excited, they got approved. No, no problem. My name is Jennifer Porter. I'm an attorney with Kiesa Shinian and John Tomasi, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of Monmouth County. We're here tonight in connection, really, with a sister project. Boys and Girls Club, as this board may or may not know, appeared last year in front of the zoning board in connection with the JCPN L lot that's located behind the existing Boys and Girls Club facility, and at that time was approved to construct approximately 21 spaces in the lot behind their property. And so that process has been ongoing, it's under construction, and it's near completion. I believe that they just have to do some fencing. Anyway, as part of that application process, Boys and Girls Club has kind of been on the path of looking for other available sites and opportunities where they can create more parking. Actually, prior to that application, the Boys and Girls Club had no off-site parking available to serve the many, many, you know, kids that were coming to the site to utilize their operations and facilities. And so we are excited this evening to present a very brief and small proposal in connection with a site that's located directly across Monroe. It's located at 1200 Monroe, and we're proposing a surface parking lot that will consist of seven parking spaces, one of which will be an ADA handicap space. In connection with our proposal this evening, I have Robert Curly with me, who's going to prevent, present both professional engineering and both professional planning testimony. Just, you know, in reference to one of the board members' opening questions, by way of zoning, the site is included among the scattered sites redevelopment plan. It was originally proposed for redevelopment with housing. That plan was amended in 2017 to permit parking as a permitted accessory use, which is why this application is before this board this evening, as a, as a principal, or rather, as a permitted accessory use. And so what we would like to do is have our site engineer kind of walk you through our plan and our proposal, and then we can address any questions in both the engineering and planning memorandums and any other questions that the board may have.
Excuse me, one quick question. Did you give a date as to when that plan was amended?
Yeah, it was in 2017.
Okay, thank you.
I may be able to give you an exact date, but it was 2017.
Thank you.
Yes, I do. Robert Curly?
Mr. Curly, can you please provide your background and qualifications for the boards? You're good? I figured a thousand times.
We accept him.
Perfect. Okay, perfect.
So our application is actually kind of boring, it's part, it's, there was two existing buildings on the facility around the light, the lot, the lot's approximately 6,900 square feet. Previously, the lot had about 85% coverage with the two buildings that were on it. Those buildings have been raised, they were completely excavated, and new material put back in its place. Right now, it's graded flat, and there's a construction fence that's surrounding the site right now. The site is going to be utilized by the Boys and Girls Club as an employee-only parking lot. It's not going to be used for drop wall, it's not going to be used for any other, any other purpose other than for employees of the club. The access would be off of Monroe, basically opposite the main entrance to the Boys and Girls Club. And if I may only appoint to the cover sheet, this cover sheet that was submitted with the application, and Monroe's approximately in the middle portion of the zoning map that I depicted on the plan, across next street is at the east end of the project. Our project is directly opposite, and it's a small triangular area. And again, it's a very modest application, and what we're doing is we're providing a driveway access into a seven-part parking lot, that's basically. Not a lot to say about it, other than we are proposing some perimeter landscaping around the exterior of the parking lot. It was requested to connect, right now, we have a great mini landscaping, it was requested, planner to continue landscaping connected, which we can do. There's also some concerns over the proposed lighting, and I just want to bring to your attention what we were initially intending to do. So initially, there are, there are existing utility poles that surround, that surround the project. Our original intention was to include, utilize Jersey Central Power and Lights, utility poles to mount floodlights and light parking lots. The intent was to try and do this as inexpensive as possible for the club, and the club being our profit, trying to save as much money as we possibly could. That was our original intention. It was in both review letters that it was strongly recommended that we not do that, not use floodlights, and based on the consideration and the other, other uses that are within 1,000 feet of this property, or parking lots that have separate lighting on it, they don't have. The one has a couple of floodlights on it, but largely, they're surface mounted lights, and that's what we intend to do. We intend to put, as recommended by the planner, 14 mounted lights within the parking lot, probably be two or three, depending upon the throw. Probably going to have to relocate this one tree that's in the parking lot back just a little bit. And other than that, from a lighting standpoint, that's our intention. Concerned over the quantity of street trees that have been placed on the project, and the thought of possibly making a modification to what we originally proposed. What I did was I utilized the trees that were, a selection of trees that were within the waterfront redevelopment plan, and they're, they're more broad trees, these are fairly narrow streets, and there was a request to make a modification to those. Hoping, we were hoping to utilize the Armstrong maple, I don't know if that's a column or enough tree, and we could probably add one more tree in that vein, and that meet all the requirements for spacing. So for tree planting, we would add one more tree along Monroe, and continue the landscaping around, so that would buffer the entire parking area. Our original proposal was to have a four-foot chain link fence surrounding the parking lot, which was brought up in both reviews that that would be a variance. What we would request of the board possibly is to eliminate the fence, if that's, if that's a consideration that could be done. I know that that's a requirement, so that's a request. And then from a, from an overall, big picture drainage standpoint, originally, there was, the lot was covered 85% with impervious surfaces, and now about 55%. We have 3,500 square feet of table. Previously, there was about 5,500 square feet of rooftop. From a drainage standpoint, we're actually making it better than what it was. Part of the submission, as we were directed, we were directed to try and do some form of drainage on the property, what we did was we directed the surface order not to the street, but to an area that we would depress and create a form of rain garden. It wasn't a formal rain garden, it was an attempt to try and manage the existing drainage on the property and try to, they just can't provide some form of drainage. This, again, was not a formal quote-unquote rain garden design, but we can work with additional plantings that surround it, and if there's, if there's other suggestions from a planting standpoint around it, that's what we're going to propose. There is curving sidewalk that surrounds the property, again, we've destroyed the driveway entrance, and our intention is not to modify the existing curver sidewalk that surrounds the property, and if, as part of one of the notes in the review letters, it said we damage anything that exists, and that's what we, that would be our intention.
So I'm open to removing the fence. I don't see that there's any reason that?
I like the idea of removing the fence, too. I guess I would just be concerned about that rain garden area and people messing.
Well, what I was going to say about whether it's an informal rain garden or not, it's actually a really great educational opportunity.
Yeah.
And you have a rapt audience right there, who it'd be really great to involve them in the design of it. So if there was a way that you could involve some of the kids in the design of the rain garden, I think it would go a long way towards being kind of educational for them.
We can certainly take that back to the club.
And just to be curious, there are precedents, like Rutgers University works with kids all the time to design rain gardens, and then they actually get them involved in the maintenance of it, too, because one of the, you know, it does require a little bit of regular maintenance, nothing, that no equipment is involved, it's just labor, so.
Mr. Curly, you said in your testimony that this parking lot is going to be exclusive, excuse me, for the exclusive use of the employees of the Boys and Girl?
That's correct.
Is there any way that you could squeeze another parking space or two into this, if it's going to be for their exclusive use? I personally, I, for one, would look favorably upon using a smaller stall if it's?
As it stands, we are, we are, we do need a waiver of the requirement for parking stalls. We're proposing nine by 18, and the ordinance allows eight and a half by 19. So we are, we are seeking a waiver in that regard. It would be very difficult to try and?
Yeah, I didn't see it something easily.
We looked at several options in terms of how we could possibly squeeze any additional amount of parking, and this was the absolute maximum we could come up with.
The only opportunity, the only opportunity that there would be is a potential tandem stall that could be right adjacent to the entrance. That would be the only opportunity. But that?
Yeah.
We didn't want to put two pounds in a one-pound bag.
Yeah, it's tight.
Could I ask you a question about, both of us are thinking?
We've been trying to unpuzzle it for days.
Have you vetted out, or did you look at when you laid this thing out, possibly driving straight through to the other street?
I was wondering that, too.
I mean, obviously, some other alternatives might require, you know, additional relief, but you might actually get a better product. And I've been trying to come up with a way of, you know, maybe one-way, one-way direction on an angle space against the fattest part, or?
Or it's one-way down?
Yeah. So if that were the entry into the site, and then you park headfirst against the long?
Isn't that street there basically a lane going into Washington?
Yes.
Yeah, it's there, and?
So the main, any traffic flow that comes through here goes down Jersey, and it does not, does not go?
Well, except for the people who live down there. There are cars parked down there, usually.
Occasionally, yeah.
Occasionally, time to time. I mean, if it's not something you laid out, we understand that you were trying to work within the confines of the ordinance.
We did try about five different layouts. Tandem parking was the only other potential option that we looked at, and that would have been extending this forward, but then that only got the parking. That was the only other option, to bring this forward, to get possibly a smaller stall.
Right. You should also maybe speak to the handicap space and our original intention with that, and potentially?
Yeah.
We looked at numerous?
I think we're beating a dead horse. God, they designed it, they've looked at it five times, this is the best they can come up with, God bless.
up with. God bless you for doing it. Let's not keep on guessing at this point.
With the...
Make it bigger.
Yeah, with the fence, I mean, I personally would be in favor of, of removing the fence or, or limiting it. I think the one thing you would have to think about is the lawn area at the, at the point would probably have to become a paver area because I think people would cut across and trek through the grass. I think that would become a disaster pretty quickly in terms of pedestrian traffic.
Or just put up a pathway through like a...
Which, to be frank, I think a paver area would be better from a, you know, community amenity kind of aspect. Yeah, you could, you know, someone could put out benches or some, you know what I mean? Yeah.
Well, anything you do to the site has to be an improvement. I mean, it is, it's just horrendous. Is there a possibility that the, with the fencing, that you could use a shorter, say a three-foot fence? I mean, it basically would be decorative, but it would give you a little bit of security there, similar to the fence further west on Prospect. I think that's a six-foot fence, but...
We're familiar with the types of fences that have been approved by the, by the city in that area. And it's, it's an aluminum type fence, black.
Yeah.
With black pickets. I, we understand that.
It would certainly be an improvement over a chain link. And maybe if you start out with something halfway nice-looking, you could keep it maintained that way. I mean, the lot, the lot is just pigsty.
I guess the concern with respect to the fencing, you know, just to be perfectly candid with the board, is, you know, that type of fencing is, is very expensive, and so it was a big concern to Boys and Girls Club in terms of the cost of, of providing that type of decorative fencing. They were actually intending on reutilizing the existing fence across the street that they were bringing over and trying to salvage and recycle in connection with this site as a cost-saving measure. And, you know, when faced with the question of, you know, that that probably wouldn't be acceptable, you know, they opted and preferred to say, well, could we just remove the fencing requirement as opposed to going and having the obligation to, to install decorative fencing, just because of the concern with that in addition to the cost with respect to drainage and the cost with respect to complying with the lighting requirements. You know, as we indicated previously, they're a non, a nonprofit, and they want to take every dollar that they possibly can and put it back into the, into the kids.
I certainly understand that. And I'd certainly be willing to listen to any kind of a reasonable proposal. Quite frankly, I think as, as Michael indicated, no fence might be better than a chain link.
I agree, too. I think the no fence could, could actually be a really good thing, especially if you were able to work with the rain garden with, you know, getting Boys and Girls Club involved. And we talked about this, I think I was on zoning in the last round, but with the other one, and we talked about the rain garden, different situation, but the, you know, same concern of maintenance, just garbage goes in and all, in any landscape. And so the more that the Boys and Girls Club could take ownership in terms of the, you know, a programmatic thing that can make it work.
My only concern is that when the fence is removed, the landscaping could suffer from people coming through there, especially after hours in the club. So there's something...
Right. And that was part of the reason why we wanted to also restrict it to employee parking, because there was a concern. You know, another thing that I forgot to mention at the beginning is that Boys and Girls Club, in follow-up to their zoning board approval and in connection with the construction of that JCPN lot parking, also went before city council and had an area directly in front of their site restriped so that they could allow for drop-off, so that there would be no conflicts where you would have children having to cross Monroe, which was a concern to them. You know, obviously, there are situations and special occasions where, like such as work on the rain garden, that it might be warranted. But in general, having drop-offs across the street, they, you know, their primary concern is the safety of, of the children.
If you don't have a fence up, what could you do to prevent people from parking in after hours? Because if you have an open lot, it means they'll pull in there at night, hang out, drink, whatever.
Decide.
Maybe some kind of bollards in a chain or something? Is there some measure that could be done like that?
Just tow at the owner's expense and then make it way more than the actual expense. It'll be another revenue stream for them. No, but tow at the owner's expense is a...
We could do the bollard and the plastic chain or big chain.
I just, I can see there's like a hanging out spot. It's a big open block, so paved well bit, like for use.
You people want to hang out, don't want to use that, love that.
The bollards with the chain then, or is that your preference? Okay.
And we would, we would be grateful to that.
Any other questions?
Comments?
If I may, Jason did bring up one other point in his review letter. He wanted to substantiate the soils that were put back on the site. So what we'll have to do is we'll have to do soil testing and a permeability rate in the area for the, where the rain garden's going to be set.
So this is that same thing about making sure it'll actually drain within 72 hours?
Was it, what I was able to do, I didn't share with the board, but I was able to share some construction photos of when they did take down the dwellings and excavated out the foundations. We do have evidence of that, and I supplied that to Jason just that he had comfort level that there's no concrete floor in the violence, so.
The lighting, what, what, what kind of lights were proposed, do we think?
What we would do is we would propose a similar fixture as what was approved on the Jersey Central Power and Light Lot.
Okay.
It's a, it's a flat, like a shoebox, but it's, it's very thin, and it would be LED.
Yeah, 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 okay.
How high would they be?
14 feet. That was the recommendation.
No, like, control box or anything with that? It's all...
No, there would have to be a, okay, so right now, although there is electricity adjacent to the site, it would need a controller. There's no way to, and plus it would have to be needed.
Yeah.
The reason, one of the reasons why we initially looked at utilizing the existing utility poles is that Jersey Central Power and Light can enter into contracts with property owners to put up floodlights, and they do a, it's a, it's a per-day basis that they build. That doesn't require a controller.
Right.
It's just, it comes on, it does.
Maintenance.
With these, with this type of light, it would have to have a controller, and it would have to have a, an area for the electric meter and the ability to turn lights on and off. So they, they could be on a photocell, but it would still have a shut-off on it. So this will have a small, probably...
Like a transformer cat.
Yeah, 24, 24 by 18 by probably 36 inches or 48 inches tall box. Actually, there's, just up the street, there's a control box adjacent to that one.
So you think that would be probably by the entrance to the...
Yes.
Yeah.
Would that have a, the meter would be in that panel box?
That's correct.
Shut off.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other great ideas, Jason, as to how we could solve some of these problems?
No.
Do you want the public to speak?
Jack, any conditions?
Okay, let's see. Compliance with the planners report regarding the landscape continuation renovation and lighting, which is going to be surface-mounted, which is next to the street. The street should change, and they're going to add one more tree, changing the type of tree.
Yes.
Compliance with both Jason, both Jason's reports. Fence renewable and any rule thereof, installation of bollards with a chain control at the Boys and Girls entrances. Not so much as a condition, but a recommendation that we have to seriously consider getting club members to participate in the creation of a rain garden on the site. That's...
The papers?
Papers.
At the eastern?
And so have tests.
Was that, was that agreed to? Papers?
I, I know that. I know it was a discussion. I didn't know it was one.
We agreed to it.
Right, that's what I, sorry.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
We could limit the area.
Can they do a...
Something like 100 square feet or something like that.
Sure.
10 by 10 area?
Yeah, I know.
Like a pathway across.
I think they...
Like a desire.
Right, I think they have the same thing actually on the, on the corner of the Boys and Girls Club, a little, a little couple steps. Yeah.
So similar...
Similar to the, yeah, across the street.
That's why you were a patio area.
It's, no, it's a...
It's like a landing area, right?
Five steps.
No, like steps.
Stepping stones?
Yeah, stepping stones, thank you.
100 square feet max, would that cover...
That covers it. That covers it.
Is that good? That was your number.
One other quick question. Is there anything you could do to screen your lot from the, lot to the west? That looks terrible. That, there's a, a few scraggly trees in there.
We are proposing herbivites along...
Yeah, herbivites.
You are proposing herbivites along the edge?
Yeah.
Keep them short? Can you keep them short so they, they block out that, the ground? I mean, boy, that looks terrible over there.
We will have to, the kids maintain the landscaping.
Good luck. Seriously.
Is that it?
Yes.
Motion to approve the application with those conditions.
Second.
Mayor Delmar?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Mandela?
Yes.
Jennifer Sutter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Application approved.
Jack, what's, what's the procedure? Now, do they have to come back with, for a resolution, removing this from the scattered sites, or is the... The scattered sites...
That's consistent.
It's used consistently, scattered site. Okay, if that point, if the amendment permits the parking lot, then you don't have to come back, right? Correct. Okay, okay.
Thank you. Resolution 405 Soul Avenue, scattered site redevelopment plan amended?
Yeah, I sent out one on topic today to everybody. I changed server to serve. I didn't pick up the correction.
Yeah.
Changed that to serve.
I move to approve the resolution.
What is it?
405 Soul. I'll second that motion. Yes. Yes.
Michael Mandela?
Yes.
Jennifer Sutter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
And Rick Lambert?
Yes.
There are no planning board committee updates, I don't think. Get a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Aye.